Then call the meeting to order, please rise from the black.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which stands by nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, approval of board meeting minutes for August twenty eighth, twenty twenty four.
I'll move for the approval of board meeting minutes for August twenty eighth, twenty twenty four.
Okay, been a motion made and seconded, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Approval of meeting agenda.
We have a couple of changes I'd like to make. We need an update for number nine, new business letter half approval of forty one thirty. So an updated as board policy. And then we would like to table number nine, letter H to the twenty, the um to the September two thousand, September twenty third board meeting. Just waiting on just kind of a, just on that uh alignment of like one page.
The contract.
The contract, yeah.
So should we table that in formal underneath business?
Not under. We can table it under new business under the agenda.
Yeah.
But I just know that those are the two areas that want some.
But we still have a correction on nine.
Updated to forty thirty. Do we need forty one sixty?
Nine F?
It's a.
Forty one sixty.
It's updated in the agenda.
Yep.
So as it reads, but not as originally advertised.
Yes, thank you. Second, I've got a motion.
Move to approve the agenda. I'll second that.
And a motion made and seconded, is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, now get an excuse for Board Member Bailey.
I'll move to excuse Board Member Bailey.
Second.
There's been a motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you for that. Okay, moving on to number five consent agenda.
How much of consent agenda?
Second.
And a motion made and seconded, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Public comment, any public comment, I presume? Can you say that again? Oh, sorry. Six, we need to do six?
Yes.
She was.
I almost liked it.
I mean, hmm, okay.
As part of the identified board goals, the board priority this year is begin doing a study of the four thousand policies. Notice the board policy forty sixty is kind of a first on our stack, you'll notice a comprehensive change. Some of the conversations we'd like to have before we move it forward on an update is is the was the sample language aligning with our internal practices. So, but we would like to review forty sixty, come back at the next board meeting with further discussions on what an update would look like on forty sixty. Questions on forty sixty, distribution of materials? Notice the new version on top, the next page is the current present format, board policy updated in September two thousand seventeen. You know, it's the procedure on the next page. What do they different than what's current?
We're thinking we want to be able to use our current forms that we've been working on for donations.
This is going to be more distribution on materials, so community members looking to have the district share different events, nonprofit groups, sports. How would that information be disseminated amongst through the district, kind of what qualifies as distribution of materials, but doesn't qualify for distribution of materials to the district? You'll notice that on our procedure, it kind of outlines, you know, nothing obscene, lewd, or vulgar, libelous. Language that is intimidating, demeaning, harassing, threatening, most commercial enterprises, most highlighted existing laws or regulation ordinances, or profitizing or disparaging religious beliefs would be within the procedure. Policy notes a change where may want to distribute materials striking, may want to distribute materials in the school district that are non-curricular, have a social recreational educational value. Versus the district may choose to make information about the students and families top programs provided that, no, so you can see kind of that language, the line striked out, but it's a pretty comprehensive change from what the state is providing.
We can have that as a first reading on that.
Yeah, we're not, we're good without changes, if you'd like to take the time to make this meeting in the next meeting, review any proposed changes you'd like to make, that would be great.
I think so.
Okay. Next is board policy four one one O. Committees and task force, just a change from shell for will. On school matters, just for district topics, so just a minor language change. But I think the big conversation is, is as we're using advisory committees, how those advisory committees look, what do they look like, and how does that align with our board procedure?
Noticed that a couple of them that I looked at too from other districts had a line in there, and I thought I saw it on the procedures and major reports, and told us on the backside, yeah, about the RCW for open public meeting act, which covers an advisory when it has to do with delegation. Which is not in our current policy. So. That's what I said mostly. On that.
You would suggest adding that? My phone?
I, from all the ones that I see, it seems like everybody has been adding it, and just by reading it, I think that's probably a good thing too, just so we don't get ourselves caught, because it is an RCW forty two thirty zero two zero. So, just in case we have an advisory committee that's put to be a task force that is supposed to do something specific, we advertise for the community to come, we have to do that within open.
Okay, so noting language with the including the both KMA.
Do we typically report the duration of the committee's existence? I think it's a really, that's a like, how is that, how do you exercise that?
Um, I mean, as of right now, we've been doing community listening sessions as our main area. Plus, for delegate, when the public range out a series of topics, we haven't tasked out a community committee to make sensitive decision-making decisions as much as we've done community hearing and community listing events on upcoming decisions. So I think that part of the question might be, how would you like to use committee going on in the future?
The updated procedure allows you to do more, if we wanted to, for some odd reason. Have a committee that had a little bit more teeth, or for some reason, then we'd be able to set parameters around that committee.
These are now board and superintendent appointed advisories, this wouldn't necessarily inclusive of like the CT advisory, which is required under federal law perkins.
Yeah, I like the addition of the RCW is probably relative to do than not.
If you like to table as a discussion for the next meeting, which is other review changes to use the next two weeks to review.
Yeah.
Okay, sounds great. For policy forty one twenty. Just parent teachers through organizations, it's kind of a guy of defiance, legal references, bingo raffles, amusement games, some things such as booster organizations and how boosters are how they are approved in order to recognize and kind of our procedures in that board policy forty one twenty eight. And I think I just say be steady on how that aligns with how our work currently operates.
Yeah. And then the procedure has an addition for gambling, obviously with that, and it follows more of what we bring up every single time that we have a fundraiser, right? So that probably should go in there.
Without a doubt.
The very last, not unfortunate, which also aligns with an RCW. Yeah, because it also makes clear, and it talks about unlicensed raffle can go. Something JB always brings up, yes.
No, we'll just have to be sure that if, you know, like the color amounts change or, you know, there's an increase that we keep it updated.
Yeah, I mean, if it is a procedure, the procedure can be done internally without board action, policy is done with board action.
Okay.
So.
I just want to make sure that we're putting it out to people or groups, so that it's always up to date now.
Yeah, I think it's going to be the back and forth on making sure that as we update our procedures and alignment, making sure that our internal forms and practices match with what's in the procedure. This current procedure, there was a proposed procedure, is that the one that's catched? So then following approval, we would update the procedure until the policy's been updated.
I know this is a private procedure, but when it says all such groups must receive the approval of this school principal or superintendent or to be recognized as a booster organization, is that um what did that process look like? Is that a procedure currently? Do you approval of?
Currently have them fill out a booster form that validates the their tax ID, their GI and their five oh one two three status.
And then by default, that gives them. We'll table that one with any interest.
Yeah, I think I'm just kind of going through discussing them. Board policy forty twenty, and as your comment was, this is a lot of the one you don't have.
No, all three of these next policies don't have any changes.
Okay.
According to WADA from what we have.
Okay, so we have those on. Okay. Yeah, board policy forty twenty confidential communications, there are no laws directed and changes forty forty, forty one twenty nine, we just have those as far as review and study and recommendations.
I kind of compared this again to other districts, and I could not find a difference, so I mean unless there's something outstanding that somebody sees that I'm fine with it forward on it.
So it's pretty straightforward.
Yeah.
I'm good with that.
Same.
You would go along with it, Stephanie has hands.
Right, I think that would take us through our discussion item D four thousand policies without changes and take us item number seven.
Okay, we have public comment?
Sorry, I basically had it over me.
Question.
Okay. Candace, do you have our public comment? Statement, it's two minutes of public comment and board cannot respond because any kind of response would mean it was not advertised, it would not be following OKMA.
Absolutely, I understand. I plan to keep it short and sweet anyways, I have a lot of years left in the school district, I got a sixth grader. There's a lot of things that have changed recently that have greatly affected our student. And the lack of staffing and the lack of plans in place for disruptive kids and in place for like recess and stuff, is it working? And it's endangering our students, including the almost forty minutes of unaccounted time for my six-year-old yesterday. Well, three staff members who were supervising over two hundred students looked for her with no help from the outside planning ahead of time. So she also was locked out front of the building for several minutes, unsupervised as well. So the lack of staff that we now have and the lack of plans is greatly affecting our students. And we got to start working towards something to change that. I have twenty years left here almost, and my friends continue to move forward to try and change something. And so I guess this is my starting point. So. I won't make you guys listen to her for the rest of your meeting, I'm just trying to want to get that out, and by next meeting, I'll try not to bring her. But I found I become a little more and be more involved. Because I do need to see some progress after seven years. And the last year and a half has greatly gone downhill, and like I said, I got a lot more years left in here, so this is my first start, so I look forward to working with you guys in the future and will log into the Zoom to finish the meeting, so you guys don't have to hear this for the rest of it, so thank you, guys.
Thank you, can you, can you state your name again?
Michelle Shavani.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, you are.
Any others? Yeah. Okay, so we have unfinished business, approval of policy twenty two fifty five, alternative learning experience course, the second final reading.
I'll move for the approval of policy twenty two fifty five, alternative learning and experience courses, second and final reading.
I'll second that.
There's been a motion made and seconded, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. So that concludes unfinished business, we've got approval of the twenty twenty four through twenty twenty six ETO contract.
I'll be abstaining.
Did you catch that, Candace?
I'll be abstaining on this topic.
I will for the approval of the twenty four twenty six ETO contract.
Second.
There's been a motion made and seconded, is there any discussion?
Would it possible that we get copy of the final contract, press to see where changes were in contract for the
redlined?
Yes.
He said do the red line though.
Yes. Okay, is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Um, approval of the twenty four twenty six EEA contract?
I abstain.
We can also get you a copy of that red line, but it was pretty clerical, because this contract is tied to the ETO contract. The changes are pretty four words total.
Okay.
I'll move for the approval of the twenty twenty four, twenty twenty six EDA contract.
I'll second that.
And a motion made and seconded, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Approval to allow eighth grade students to participate in sub-varsity high school sports, Mr. Clark?
The WA allows for eighth grade participation to save a program, like if we were to lose a JV soccer team, because we don't have numbers, we can pull eighth graders. And I've done this before. So instead of asking each in specific instance, instance, I'd like to just have a blanket approval that when I, we need this, that I can just go to the eighth graders, because this is something that WA does mandate that you get approval for.
And they have a set of rules and stuff for pulling eighth grader.
Very good, and we follow a bubble sheet, and it's only certain sports that get to do it.
And then you have to request their approval, correct? Is that kind of?
Request league approval.
Yeah, from, okay, that's right, I just was wondering if anybody else, because there's quite a bit of process that goes on that Ron has.
Now, I've done it three times, and I just, and I should have got more approval, I would just, uh, I have league approval. I just want this to be a blanket that I can do it. One little caveat that you could use it for varsity, if you're in danger of losing your varsity team, then you can use them for varsity. But with our numbers now, I don't think that's ever going to be the situation, I don't even know if the sub varsity is going to be the situation, our numbers are pretty good.
What are the sports that are allowed?
Team sports except football.
We used it back in
Two years.
Two years ago.
You didn't.
Yeah, because we didn't have enough for JV.
Fantastic, it's been ten last two years.
Okay.
And other than that, I don't remember when we.
I'll move for the approval to allow eighth grade students to participate in sub-varsity high school sports.
Second.
There's been a motion made and seconded, there any discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Approval of the superintendent evaluation criteria?
Look at the growth goals, match it with the WADA evaluation requirements. Top priority this year is we're really being very serious about the impact on student learning. How are we staffing and how are we prioritizing student learning? So standard one mission, vision, core values aligns the district procedures and practices on that floor, replace evaluating effectiveness and impact on student learning. Recognizing that capitalizes on the diversity within the community for inclusion strategies and programs. Works to reduce opportunity and achievement gaps, focus on inclusion, every student involved and engaged. Focus on promotes the systemic improvement of curricular, that's going to be the focus on the implementation of our new instructional materials. Promote the development of student agency and learning and participation, or replace measuring student engagement and involvement. Indicate standard five professional capacity indicator A is where we place focus on evaluations, professional development of the improvement of student learning is the focus on high-quality instructions in every classroom. And then standard seven indicator A, use continuous improvement process for the board policy reviews for four thousand policies. Do you like further elaboration or any kind of further, you know, I kind of took the bold points from the board goals for the twenty four, twenty five school year, and broke those out, connected them, I think we arrived at a many plate that you would like.
I will move with the approval, so essentially the brother should, superintendent evaluation.
Second that.
And a motion made and seconded, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Discussion approval of policy four thousand public information program first and first rated.
This was a was update on the four thousand policy, it had a just major update on staff communication, public and public health information, just where we would be placing information that was in alignment with updated RCWs.
I'm sorry, for the approval of policy four thousand public information program, first reading.
There's been a motion made and seconded, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Approval, a discussion approval of policy forty one thirty, title one, part A, parent family engagement, first reading.
This is just an update with updated federal laws on adding title one, part A, the language, the definitions under title one, part A.
I will move with the approval of policy forty one thirty, title one, part A, parent engagement first reading.
Second.
And a motion made and seconded, there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Approval of the twenty four, twenty five exempt employee pay increase?
This is only up to five percent, we'd not go beyond, it's consistent with the bargaining contracts that have been done, but we did post some new positions that we had some late level hires that were already every base salary and a shifting of responsibilities that those would not be applied to. Get that right, Lisa.
Or like our new hires.
On the new hires, that's already built into their starting salary.
Yeah, yeah.
I'll move for the approval of the twenty twenty four, twenty five exempt employee pay increase.
Second.
There's been a motion made and seconded, is there any further discussion?
I abstain. Do I abstain?
No, Eric's not in that.
Eric's not in that one.
Okay.
Even admin.
Okay, I'm back in.
She's on a sideline waiting. Nope, I'm back in, okay.
I was trying to send you through my eyes, like.
She'll look at you.
Like, we should make a crazy eyes. Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Approval of the twenty four, twenty six EESP contract?
I think we are looking, so Chad, just a question, we already have payroll already set up on this, we're looking to table to the next contract, are you good with we table it? You're not forcing another change, should we just leave payroll all set up? Payroll's already set up, we're just asking to table it while we get that last line fixed, you're kind of good with us just leaving payroll all set up, you're not forcing a change between that one. We don't foresee a change. So we'll ask that table till nine twenty three, but just asking for, I don't need a motion, but just recommended guidance that we just can use to leave our payroll set up as it's ready to go.
It can official on table. I'll move to table, new business nine H until nine twenty three, twenty.
What second?
There's been a motion made and seconded, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you, Nicole. Superintendent report.
We had a great start to the school year. Did learning walks today and we're in classrooms, we set the priorities that we'd like to have, learning targets in every classroom, identifying what we want our students to know. Clear standards align success criteria, I think our administrators, we did our learning walks today, we made it into about fifteen classrooms out of the high school and consistently across the board, all fifteen were exactly hitting the expectation that we want to see. Where all of our students know what they want to learn, where the students know what they want, you know, how to be successful in these sort of classes, we're pretty excited about the the direction in which we're going and the seriousness in which our staff is taking that work on, our top priority is that we can show all of our students are learning across the district. And that we have data aligned to show that our students are So I'm just kind of leaving it there, I think, Mr. Clark, we've had some pretty good successes in athletics, and we had the only big one A in that school win in Grace Harbor last Friday, and then we had a great win down against WF West volleyball, so we're having
That was yesterday, a hundred degrees in the gym, but it was great, three straight sets, it was one more exciting, wasn't it?
Just a great start for the year.
Why was it so hot?
Great start to the year, so I think that would make for a pretty short superintendent report. Future agenda items, we will have that loaded up now that the board evaluation criteria has been identified, that in the next meeting we'll be identifying the topic for the future board.
Okay, so at this time, we're going to convene to a exec, an executive session for group and uh, for grievance appeal meeting for thirty minutes with no action being taken.
We will come out at seven, yeah.
Seven oh one.
Like, we're talking outside, dude.
We gotta come up with something.
I'll move to extend that executive session by 15 minutes.
You gotta give a time.
Ooh, so we'd be out at 7:16.
I'll second that.
Then a motion made and seconded during the discussion. All in favor?
Thank you.
I'll move to extend executive session by 15 minutes. We'll come out at, what do we have?
Seven thirty one.
Seven thirty one.
Motion made in second of this only discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? motion yes.
Thank you for your time.
We need to adjourn the meeting.
Yes.
You're up.
I make a motion. We adjourn the meeting.
I second.